Community that Parks and Rec staff has told them that certain programming was going to need to be cut as a result of this program. Is that accurate?
We had a conversation with one of the coordinated volunteers of the travel basketball program that we added three years ago, and we wanted to work with them to try to create a hybrid. It was taking more and more staff resources, and we have this program plus reopening the Pinnacle Community Center. So those conversations are ongoing to say, and it's almost like Concorde Crush when we created a, working with a community group, we created a new youth lacrosse league to, and they handle the day-to-day operations. Do we take their registrations and we help schedule in the facilities? That's what we're looking for, and we're not there yet.
Yeah, so is the change in programming for basketball as a result of this program or something else?
It's about available resources going forward to maximize the benefit of the residents of Concorde.
Could you please enlighten us about the pre-registration? What was last year's pre-registration and how did it go?
I think it was a one-page, just like all of our programs, we do require pre-registrations. They kind of waiver a couple of the rules, provide us a personal information. We did that in a one-page document to try to make it easy. I think the first couple of weeks it went chaotic. A lot of the kids either didn't have the registration form with them, did but it wasn't filled out correctly, but after probably the second week it was really smooth and every week it improved. So we perfected that process for this year.
So when we say it's not filled properly, what are the steps we are putting in place to make sure, what is the reason that it's not filled properly? Are they not English speakers? Did they not get the help they needed or because of other issues that happened? Because I think, as you said, it was chaos last year and some was left behind because of that process. So I just want to make sure that, again, we talked about engaging the community, we talked about giving everybody a fair share and opportunity. What are the things you are putting in place to make sure that if I come first, even if I don't know how to fill it, I will be helped by somebody that we pay to do this or if, not pay to do this, but if we have somebody there that will help?
I think the biggest thing is working with the Concorde School District to do it in multiple languages. Most of our, the registration form was just on one language. So we've touched base with some staff at the Broken Ground School who are going to help us do that. So to get the word out, I think the other challenge and the opportunity to improve is we require parents to sign the registration form, and that's not always clearly understood. And I think we've improved that process a little bit, that, you know, we do need parents' signatures, especially if they're going to leave their children. So I think we've improved it.
Thank you. Last follow-up, because the capacity we are looking at, I don't know, I don't do math either. You said to do math, if we are looking at ninety and then you have hundred that came and the ninety, first ninety that came, for some reason they didn't fill their form correctly. We reject it and then we go to the next, or how do you do the selection process? And then if they are issued key mubs, is that one-time use or is it for the season?
The key fobs would be for the season, and we do follow best practices when ratios when working with kids, the max is one to fifteen. If we have ninety kids in the building, anybody comes in after that, they would have to wait until a child leaves, just like we do for pools. And we have to save capacity, we'll handle the capacity, and then folks can wait their turn to get in.
Staff report indicated that approximately sixty percent of the children live in wards eight or nine. Are there any participants last year or projected this year who are non-Concorde residents?
The goal was to keep it like last year's to Concorde residents, Concorde Pinnacle residents only.
So there will be no participants from other communities?
No, sir.
And the cost of this is free to all of the participants, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open the public hearing on item thirty-eight F. Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item thirty-eight G.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of seventy-three thousand dollars for law enforcement-related programs and accepting the sum of seventy-three thousand dollars in unmatched grant funds from the United States Department of Justice.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
And members of the council, these dollars would be used for technical upgrades, equipment purchases, and trading.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to testify on item thirty-eight G? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item thirty-eight H.
It is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application in an amount of up to twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars, appropriating the sum of twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars for police department roadway safety and outreach initiatives and accepting the sum of twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars in grant funds from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency for this purpose.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's a total match for the city for six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's an in-kind match, so simply put dollars amounts into the resources the city will be providing towards these patrols and equipment through the grant period. Now you can see listed the, all the different programs this provides assistance to, all programs that you've supported in the past.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, I'll open this item to the, for public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to testify on item thirty-eight H? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on item thirty-eight H. With the permission of the council, I'd like to hold a combined public hearing on items thirty-eight L, I'm sorry, item thirty-eight I and item thirty-eight J.
Sounds good.
All right, Madam City Clerk.
The first item is a resolution appropriating the sum of eleven thousand dollars in the Granite United Way Grant Project for Training in Adverse Childhood Experiences, accepting the sum of eleven thousand dollars from the Granite United Way for this purpose. Second is a resolution appropriating the sum of twenty-three thousand five hundred and five dollars in the Granite United Way Grant Project for expenses incurred by the Police Department for Adverse Childhood Experience Response Team Program Activities and accepting the sum of twenty-three thousand five hundred and five dollars from the Granite United Way for this purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Manager.
And members of the council, the Adverse Childhood Experience Response Team is made up of members of the Concorde Police Department, the mental health provider from Riverbend, and a coordinator from the Merritt County Human Resources. This team will visit families who have experienced incidents when police are requested for service, where children have, may have been exposed to violence or other adverse childhood experiences. The team will access, assess the situation and determine next steps and referrals that can be made for either the child and/or the family. This funding will be used to train those officers who have not had the training for adverse childhood experiences. Funding will continue from March fourth, twenty-twenty-four through September twenty-ninth. So obviously, they've been, they've been doing these programs in advance. And in addition to that, the, the grant will allow for the Concorde Police Department to fund the department's adverse childhood response team, overtime costs associated with implementing the program, and there is no match involved with the acceptance of these funds.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on items thirty-eight I or thirty-eight J? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, we'll now move to the public here, to public hearing action. Madam City Clerk, item thirty-nine.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Parking to modify law enforcement-only parking near the Federal Complex on Pleasant Street.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move of approval.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance amendment as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item forty.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title III Building and Housing Codes for Building Regulations.
Move of approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item forty-one.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars to include a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to the golf fund and thirty-thousand dollars to the arena fund for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the resolution as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item forty-two.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of eighty-thousand dollars in the new airport terminal building project to replace water services at the municipal airport and authorizing the issuance of airport general obligation bonds and notes in the sum of eighty-thousand dollars for this purpose.
Thank you.
Move of approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item forty-three.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of twelve-thousand five hundred dollars in the airport fund as a transfer out to capital and authorizing the use of airport fund balance for this purpose, appropriating the sum of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the new airport terminal building project for an environmental assessment, accepting the sum of two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration, accepting the sum of twelve-thousand five hundred dollars in grant funds from the state of New Hampshire, and authorizing use of twelve-thousand five hundred dollars as a transfer from the airport fund for this purpose.
Item moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the resolution as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item forty-four.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of twenty-thousand dollars in the general fund for the Parks and Recreation Department to offer programming for resident youth and also authorizing the use of twenty-thousand dollars as a transfer in from the Special Event Reserve Fund for this purpose.
Thank you.
Move of approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I think this is a fantastic program, and I just want to acknowledge Meredith Cooley who's in the audience. I think that anything that we can do for our youth, especially in this area, is wonderful. I've been paying attention to the school board, and they recently put out a report that forty-three percent of our public school students receive free and reduced lunches. So to qualify for free and reduced lunch, you have to, a family of four makes fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. So we, those are our kids, this is our future, so I think having a free program where kids can get together and play safely is a wonderful thing. But I, a request of Mr. Gill, I don't think it's enough to just work with the school district and Ms. Cooley. I would like to request that Mr. Gill also work closely with Charm Amico of Project Story, Fisto Ndaishemaye of Change for Concord, Jessica Livingston, as well as Clement Kagugu of Overcomers Refugee Services, and our police social worker who is part of the ASERT team. I would like to see Mr. Gill work with each of those individuals. So just as Counselor Seku pointed out, they can eliminate any barriers and we can maximize use of this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? Counselor Fennessy.
Thank you. I think this is a great program. I want to thank the people who came up with this idea last year. I did just want to highlight something and a concern that I have. This is additional funds that we've appropriated for this programming, and yet what we're hearing is that there are program, existing programs that we budgeted for that is being cut, and at least one member of the community has been told that the reason for that was because of this. I, I think that's unfortunate, that's what's being done. I think we need to have a larger conversation about programming. I think there's a lot of good programs that we are doing and could be doing through the Parks and Rec program. There's some new program, programming that's being offered that we're sort of outsourcing to private organizations that have a monetary interest in getting into our community spaces and trying to recruit people for a financial benefit to their organizations, and I'm very concerned that that is the, the, the place that we're going with some of our programming. And so I think we as a council need to perhaps get more engaged and our pack get more engaged with the programming that we're offering.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? Counselor Curts, Counselor Schultz.
Still looking for that upgrade in adoption.
Disease, disease.
You know, it's great. I want to thank the city manager and David Gill, the Parks and Rec Director, for working on this as a new counselor who also represents the Keach Park area. I'm very excited that this is something that is becoming permanent. I also want to second what Stacy Brown said, what Counselor Brown said about continuing to expand who we work with. I think that they are community leaders as well, who I think very easily could be worked with on these, on the weekend availability, and everyone that she named is someone who has contributed greatly to our community. Overall, this is a fantastic gain, so bravo to everybody for making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? Counselor Seku.
I just want to second what everybody else said, but I'm uncertain to go to the volunteers and the staff, because as we said, we can never go wrong on supporting our kids and giving an opportunity to all kids. But there is also many ways to make this available to all, like Counselor Futz asked, is this only for resident of Concord? Yes, it's for resident of Concord. So what can we do to make sure that our resident of Concord know about the program, take advantage of the program? And I think that will go a long way. So thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes.
I'll be real quick. I promise. I just want to say we got here because, you know, the help of Meredith Cooley and Counselor Curts. So they really did a lot of education for us on how to actually do this and ran, ran that first-year experiment, which we're now taking, making bigger, and then hopefully, as David said, next year we'll be part of the budget, so.
Here, here. Great, thank you. Any other discussion?
I have one for Counselor Fennessy. How many children are, do you believe may be affected by the cut that you mentioned?
Between sixty and sixty-five.
Really?
Yep.
I would just like to add that, add my thanks to everyone involved in this program. I think it's a great example of how engaged community members, working with city staff, can really create good programs that benefit our community, benefit our kids, and make Concord an even better place to live. So congratulations to the folks at Friends of Keach Park. Congratulations to the Parks and Recreation Department for working together with the city manager, who should take some credit in making this possible. Counselor Horn.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Gill, he did note he was going to be working with the Concorde School District, that he'd also be working with MV for outreach for.
Point well taken.
He just gave you a thumbs up.
Well taken, Counselor. All right. Counselor Seku.
I'm sorry, I think I will go. Thank you for mentioning the two names. So when I said volunteer, of course, I mean Counselor Curts and Meredith Cooley, because we work very closely, asking question, negotiating, it went through.
I couldn't believe you left them out.
Thank you, but you mentioned them, right? So it is important to mention that they put a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of expertise to make this happen, so thank you.
Right. Counselor Curts.
We weren't the only ones. It was a real broad community effort with many folks at the table for many months, so thank you.
Very good. Ready for the vote, folks? All those in favor of the resolution as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no, ayes have it. Resolution passes. Congratulations to everyone. Madam City Clerk, item forty-five.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of seventy-three thousand dollars, excuse me, for law enforcement-related programs and accepting the sum of seventy-three thousand dollars in unmatched grant funds from the United States Department of Justice.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move of approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Brown.
Your Honor, I will be recusing myself from items forty-five through forty-eight.
Thank you very much. All right, all those in favor of item forty-five as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Madam City Clerk, item forty-six.
It is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application in an amount of up to twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars, appropriating the sum of twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars for police department roadway safety and outreach initiatives and accepting the sum of twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars in grant funds from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency for this purpose.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move of approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of resolution forty-six as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Madam City Clerk, item forty-seven.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of eleven thousand dollars in the Granite United Way Grant Project for Training in Adverse Childhood Experiences and accepting the sum of eleven thousand dollars from the Granite United Way for this purpose.
Move of approval.
Second.
Item moved and seconded. Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor of the item as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item forty-eight.
A resolution appropriating the sum of twenty-three thousand five hundred and five dollars in the Granite United Way Grant Project for expenses incurred by the Police Department for Adverse Childhood Experience Response Team Program Activities and accepting the sum of twenty-three thousand five hundred and five dollars from the Granite United Way for this purpose.
Thank you.
Move of approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the item as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion is adopted. This brings us to the reports. City Manager.
Could I suggest we do a number forty-nine quickly, and then you might want to take a just a minute or so break, and we'll set up for the next series.
That sounds good. Okay? All right.
Shall I read it?
If you wish.
Item forty-nine is a report from the Assistant Finance Director regarding annual comprehensive financial report award notification.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Audrey Masters, our Assistant Finance Director, who would normally be here to do this, she's on vacation this week, much needed. I am very pleased to report that the city, for the twenty-ninth consecutive year, has received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. What does that mean? That means that we've been judged by a partial, impartial panel to say that we've met very high standards in our financial reporting. We have demonstrated the spirit of full disclosure in everything that we do financially related, and this is the highest form of recognition that we can receive as a government entity for our financial reports and for accounting. So this is really a very high-level report, and twenty-nine years, I believe, is the longest in the state of New Hampshire, so that's really a very high mark that we've continued to achieve each and every year. I would like to say that although my department, the accounting department, does put this report together, we work with our auditors on an annual basis through this, it really takes everybody in the city to work towards making sure that we reach the standards that we need in order to get this done. So I want to thank everybody, all, all departments in the city for all the help, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Libra?
Nice work. [applause]
We'll bring Audrey to the next meeting.
That's right, that's right. She'll love that.
She can experience the.
All right, thank you, Mr. Libra.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well done, indeed. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Thank you. Now, I'm going to declare a five-minute recess.
Three.
Two.
Two-minute recess.
[laughing]
Two-minute recess.
Plan, that brown, brown building at the top of the page. My page turner just left.
I'm not leaving you for good.
Yeah, I could go up and point if anybody needs me to.
Go to the next slide.
So, option one, just some bullet points about option one. So, it's renovating the existing facility, same footprint, forty-four hundred square feet, pretty much the same layout. In talking with Frank and the city, we feel that, you know, with the renovation, it'll be pretty much down to the foundation and then reconstructing from there. So, it'll essentially be a complete renovation, entire building, framing, all the equipment and everything. You know, there is the pro shop space, which will be pretty much the same space for two simulators. We have included generator, signage, and solar ray and battery storage, as well as some new equipment.
And this auction does not include space for the ski group that's included in the other options?
So, this is a floor plan, the renovation itself, it should look very familiar, very similar, because it's basically what's there now, very little change. And some elevations, again, very similar to what is there now, you know, and please note, these are very conceptual, nothing's been finalized yet, so don't read too much into them. So, option two, it's an addition, so it's around a 5,000-square-foot addition, adding on to the existing building, so additional restaurant dining space, additional pro shop space, room for an additional simulator, better restroom facilities, improved patio space, the generator, solar ray, same as the other. Option one, road signage, cabinetry, furniture. This does have the ski room included as an alternate and does have a geothermal heating system alternate included as well. So, this doesn't show the footprint of the existing building, but basically, the pro shop's the light blue on the lower left, and that, that space pretty much changes, I'm sorry, doubles in size, and then the improved dining space above, and improved kitchen spaces and improved restrooms. So, again, you know, some very conceptual elevations of the proposed renovation addition to the existing building. Option three, new building, about the same size, square footage as the proposed renovation addition, the building would move, and that has some benefits to the operation of the existing clubhouse and pro shop. It will allow for construction to occur while the existing building remains open. And again, the improvements are pretty much the same as the option two, the renovation addition, so additional restaurant dining space, larger pro shop, a training room, three simulators, additional larger restrooms, patio space, generator. So, there's the ski room. A lot of similarities between option two and three, just one's renovation addition, and this option three is new construction. And a footprint or floor plan of the proposed option three building. And some conceptual elevations. I'll sit back.
The renovation of the forty-four hundred square foot building, tell me if you can't hear, as far as it goes. And that came in at five thousand, two forty-seven.
Five million.
Five million.
I'll take the five thousand.
We've renovated.
You've got the job.
Okay, and then, option two is a renovation, as Bill explained, goes to ninety-five hundred, twenty-five square feet, and that gets up to eight million, seventy-four thousand and three twenty-seven. Option three, which is a new building at ten thousand, five hundred, comes in at eight thousand, fifty-four, eight million, there I go again, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred. The breakdown of that, if you get that up there?
No, not, I didn't break down.
Okay. Okay. But generally speaking, the renovation.
Sorry.
The renovation has been talked about as the prior prices being nine hundred and some odd thousand, but those are limited scope of work. This is a wholesale renovation. This building was built in the sixties. Most buildings built in the sixties have no redeemable qualities that were already built. There were some that were well-built, but this is, this building's tired and it's worn out. To renovate it properly, you're going to have to strip it out, you're going to have to tear everything off. The only thing you're saving is a foundation and a wood frame, and the foundation needs to be reinforced. The floor slab probably needs to be torn out, you're going to tear out most of the plumbing because it's already in failure. The roof frame carries a snow load from the sixties, and that doesn't work anymore, so you're going to have to reinforce the roof, and it's not size-wise, sizeably braced, so you're going to have to brace it. So, you're taking a rather small building and gutting it down to almost nothing and then building it up, and that's why this price is there. The prior price was replacing items that had failed, like windows and doors and siding, but not really doing a 2024 gut renovation, so just to answer that ahead of time. The renovation in addition, you're doing much the same thing to the forty-four hundred square feet, and then the addition goes to it state-of-the-art. And then the new building, for the reasons I explained on option number one, the new building's coming out about the same price, even though it's a thousand-square-foot more.
So, in the council report, we do have the detailed costing sheets included in the report to council. There's also the recommends referring to the committees for the Ad Hoc Beaver Meadow Building Committee, the Golf Course Advisory Committee, and the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee. So, with the council's recommendation to refer these to those committees, we would work with those committees, come up with a recommendation, and report back to the city council sometime after the beginning of the year. And then, whatever the city council, how they would like us to proceed from there, is exactly what we would do. So, we'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody has tonight.
Thank you, Mr. LeBron. Councilor Kurtz.
Yes, thank you very much for the report. Does option three, the cost that you've worked out for that, does that include demolition of the existing building?
Yes.
Okay. And what would happen to the space where the existing building currently stands in the proposed site plan?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Right now, if you picture where the Beaver Meadow building is, and then if you look at the tent, which is kind of a little bit on a little bit lower level, the plan that we would have is that we would take where the tent is, move it up to the existing building site, so then we'd have great access to the new building, which would be behind the Tenth T, and then also the tent, which has really become a focal point for many of the events that we've had at Beaver Meadow.
Thank you.
Council Brown?
Yes, you'd said the building was built in the sixties, wasn't it also renovated recently? And there was a new roof put on?
Well, I wouldn't say recently, it was at least twenty years ago. Just feels like recently. Follow-up?
Yes, and H.L. Turner did the assessment.
We did.
About the facility assessment, and that was just based on visual observation, is that correct?
Correct. Other questions? Councilor Horn?
In the new build, what are the two separate dining rooms for?
One of them is the actual dining area itself, and then the other is the kind of the bar area, so they kind of meld in together.
Okay, through that corridor.
Yeah, it's shown as a corridor area, but it's really all kind of the same space.
Other questions?
What's the capacity of the dining area?
Council Foot?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a good question. I believe it's about a hundred and eighty people, so that we could accommodate an event that we would have.
Thank you.
Council Credit Vic?
Just for clarification, that would be on the expansion, not the existing. The existing is ninety, which doesn't even do a full event.
That's, that's correct, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the expansion.
Thanks.
Council Fantasy?
Thank you. I'm not sure who this is best directed toward, but perhaps it's Mr. LeMay. We, there was a scope of work at some point in the past that you referenced, that was nine hundred thousand dollars. Sitting here today, if we were to do that scope of work, would that be sufficient for this building?
In other words, what would it be today?
Well, I guess it's two questions. One, what would it cost today? And two, would that make any sort of a dent in the, in the items that are required to be renovated or upgraded at the facility?
I mean, that was done, I'm going to say about six, seven years ago. So, in that time, I would say pricing was probably fifty to seventy-five percent more in construction. Anything that was pre-COVID, we're saying, we're seeing is at least fifty percent more, in some cases seventy, eighty percent more than pre-COVID. As far as making a dent, it was things like replace windows, replace doors, but it wasn't wholesale replacement of mechanical systems, and in that time, those mechanical systems have gotten older, to the point where I think Phil could tell you, they back up the plumbing on a regular basis, which means the plumbing systems below the slab are failing. On the board, a second stat, we've had that happen in the original school building. They're all, we had to tear up all the floors and put in all new race pipes onto the floor, so I think you're looking at the same thing down the line here, so. Follow-up?
So, would it be fair to say that that scope of work didn't include anything for the bathrooms?
I think it was cosmetic bathroom repair, but it wasn't wholesale replacement of piping.
Thank you.
Didn't it also, I believe that also there was tagged on another two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for electrical and fire alarm systems upgrade? Which really brought it up from, from nine hundred and fourteen thousand to one point one two six million for that.
Exactly.
So, fifty percent increase to do that.
Yeah, in that, every project's different, and, but understand that construction was seeing inflation on as much as ten percent by 2017.
And probably still see water in the, on the floor in the ladies' room, right?
Right.
You've been in there?
I'm not going to touch that with a ten-foot pole, Councilor, but thank you for throwing it my direction.
Thank you. So, I was just reading the ad hoc building committee meeting minutes. The last time they met was in January, after the vote to suspend this project, and that was the next steps. Mayor Champlin provided the committee with some direction for going forward. He noted that he would like to see the committee work closely with city staff and provide several options for the clubhouse, including feasibility and cost to renovate, the feasibility and cost to put on addition, and scaled back options for a newly-built clubhouse. He also requested that some private fundraising be conducted. So, I'm a little confused why the committee hasn't met since January, when they were tasked with working with staff to come up with options, and there has been no fundraising done for this.
Councilor, I'm happy to answer that, unless you want to, Council Fantasy?
Whatever you would like. I'm happy to take that question. So, the decision was made that it may, didn't make a great deal of sense for the committee to meet until there was options to consider, at which point the committee can then work and make whatever recommendations with the design and the construction team with respect to that. So, that, that's why the committee has not met.
And I would add that it makes no sense to engage in public fundraising when you don't have a package. As someone who's been engaged in numerous publicly, public funding process, projects, you've got to have your package to show people, this is what we're going to do. And until you have the design phase done, there's no point in really starting to look at that. That would be my answer. Councilor Credit Vic?
I was just going to add to the thought that also the committee had finished their first round of work, and they hadn't actually been appointed second work. That's this meeting right here.
Thank you, Council. Council Brown?
Thank you. I just don't see where that discussion happened publicly. You know, it states that there was public fundraising should be conducted, and it said, lastly, committee members agreed that they need to work on public relations, and that the public needs to be brought along step by step in the process. It's ten months later, and we're just now hearing about this.
I'm nonplussed by this, and let me, I appreciate your question, but, you know, you've got to have designs to move forward on this. There could have been a lot of public meetings that would have been wheel spinning, that would have gotten us nowhere, because what we need is what these gentlemen have presented, which is the three options that I requested. These are going to go, pending the approval of city council, to the three committees listed, to the Ad Hoc Beaver Meadow Building Committee, and the Golf Course Advisory Committee, and the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee. I'm sure that the Ad Hoc Beaver Meadow Building Committee is going to open this up for public hearing, and, correct?
Every meeting is public.
And, right, and review the plans, and that's, and that's where, I mean, there really would not have been anything constructive to be, to have been done until these gentlemen had completed their work and presented their report to us.
Your Honor, I would just like to state.
Councilor, Council Brown?
Thank you. I'd just like to state why I'm riled up about this. I received a tour by our golf pro, Mr. Davis, in April, and he showed me the deficiencies of the building, and I was taking pictures, and there was a picture of, of damage inside the pro shop wall. That was in April. I went back in December, and that damage was still there and still visible, and that was a full season. I went back yesterday. So, this is, the first time I saw it was April 2023, I went back yesterday, and that damage is still there. So, I am very reticent to dedicate any taxpayer dollars to a facility when it is currently not taken care of.
Council Kurtz? Council Schultz, I am so sorry, Council Schultz.
I'm just going to change my name now.
I noticed you have turned your nameplate towards me.
I did that for today. I'd also just add, you know, as a member of that committee, I think, given the conversations that were had, right as we, as a new council coming in, was, between these conversations, were sort of sandwiched in, I, I mean, I'm not the authority on the committee, but I do think, given how heated it was, how much opposition was on the table at that point, I mean, it makes, it makes sense to me that we took a breather of, a bit, so we could get our ducks in a row. And that part just makes sense to me. I mean, I can understand the reasons why you're concerned about this. I guess that's why I was appointed to the committee, I have those concerns too. But I think it was reasonable, given how heated it had been, and how, you know, we needed to take a beat before we could regroup and start this new ad hoc committee out. That's helpful. Probably doesn't answer your question.
Thank you. Council Second?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if it is too early, and you can make it very sure if it's too early, but is there any studies that are done? Because we know what the revenue for the golf course is after renovation, what that would be, and I use my word clearly here to make sure when we renovate or rebuild, what that will be for a revenue, because we are investing some money here, and we need to have some numbers that guide us.
Sure, as we go through the remainder of this process, and once we get recommendations from the committees, we will include a pro forma in order to have a look at what it will actually look like, and then what the contribution from the general fund will be, and what the contribution from the golf fund would be. So, we'll try to put all of that together as we're completing this and bringing a report back to the city council for recommendation.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, that will include also what the revenue of the year will be?
Yeah, that's exactly right, and that's what we try to do in the pro forma, is we look at the budget, we look at the current year revenue, and we look at what we project for future year revenues. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball for future years, but we do our best projections for what we can do for future years.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments? Or questions?
Maybe a request. So, you know, I, I, you know, it was heated, I was here for the last council, and there was, there was a lot of testimony, and I think what's, would be important for everybody in the community to see is, okay, we do the pro forma for the golf course, but also, I think we should also understand what other taxpayers spend for the arena, the pools, the Heights Community Center, the library, all these things that we recreate and use, it'd be good, for me, I think it would be good so, for the community to see how this compares to some of the other entities that we recreate with. You know, I'm aware that there are thirty-six thousand rounds of golf, I think, per year at that golf course, along with ice skating, cross-country skiing. I think it was used for a voting ward at one point, I think I heard.
Any more? Yes, sir.
Okay, so, it has potential, and I think, I think we need to recognize not only the golf course, but I think we also need to understand where else we're spending money and how much we're spending money. And, and if I remember correctly, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, this was about twenty-five or thirty dollars a year on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, and I think it would be important to show how that compares with some of the other activities that we all, you know, we appreciate, if that's possible.
We'll do that. I could put a chart together that would show that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other discussions for? Thank you, gentlemen, that's a great presentation. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you very much. Apologize about the technical difficulties. I'm going to take a class tomorrow.
Motion to approve the report and send to committees?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Council Brown?
Yes, I would like to see fundraising happening at these committees.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other discussion? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close no. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look, that brings us to item number fifty-one.
It is a staff presentation relative to housing developments recently completed or currently underway.
Wow. I'm sure, bro, I've read that.
Ooh, it's taking it. Sorry, Brian.
There's no report?
There is no report.
Sorry. It was meant to be a whisper. I forget how loud.
Where were you twenty minutes ago?
You must have been somewhere else.
Studying.
I will note that IT reports that the city manager.
I'm wondering if, turn this off when I flip back. Matt, turn the.
I don't want to gamble that.
Just turn around, I was excited. I'll just spin around again, it's fine.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it. All right. The hour's getting late, you've been here for a while already. A quick presentation to walk you through some housing developments that are going on in Concord, because it's of great interest to everybody right now. We gave the council an update about a year ago. We've updated that now, so we're going to give it to you this way. By way of introduction, I don't know if anybody's aware of this, but, you know, the city's profile is clearly rising. When you end up on Zillow's top ten list for 2023 of most searched communities in the United States for real estate, that's a mixed blessing. So, in our case, we were number ten, Nashua and Manchester were number two and three. I think Manchester was the only community on that list that was more than a hundred thousand, so there's a lot of interest in small to medium-sized cities, and I think, you know, Concord's attractive for a lot of reasons, it's a wonderful place to raise a family, all the reasons that we are here, but I think there's other national factors that are driving things, the pandemic, working from home, work wherever you want in the United States. I have met more people in Concord recently that are buying houses or building houses, being in the community development department, that are coming here because of climate change. I've met more Californians than I've met in a long, long time. So, very interesting. When people are looking to relocate, tax system's a big thing. We're one of a handful of states, I want to say five of them in the United States, that have no broad-based sales or income tax. So, you know, they're looking at Florida, they're looking at Texas, they're looking at, if you're looking at New England, you're looking at New Hampshire, and if you're looking at New Hampshire, you're going to look at Concord. So, a lot of things that are driving that trend, but wanted to call that to everybody's attention. Some quick statistics about the city, and we'll make this available somehow through the clerk's office to everybody, but, you know, that's our current population now, is a little more than forty-four thousand, we go to eighty thousand during the day, two point three people per household. You can see what the change has been in the number of housing units between 2010 and 2022, only five hundred and seventy-four, three percent over twelve years, that's dramatically changing right now. You can see what home prices were between before COVID and what they are now, it's a seventy percent increase over the five years. You can see what median rent has done, it's gone up, call it, just under thirty percent in five years. Our vacancy rate right now for all units is zero point four percent, that's from New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, a balanced rental market is five percent. Housing Choice vouchers, formerly known as Section Eight, there's about three hundred and seventy-three of them in town, shelter beds, some of those are seasonal, there's about ninety. Lot of discussion about fair share of affordable units, and, and, so this is a rather busy slide, but this is from the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. This is the income-restricted units that are located in the Central New Hampshire region, which are twenty communities. I would note that in Concord's population, this is 2020 data, Concord's population's forty-four thousand, or roughly thirty-six percent of the regional population of a hundred and twenty thousand, but yet Concord has fifty-eight percent of the total income-restricted units in the Central New Hampshire region. So, to call attention to that, is Concord doing its fair share for affordable housing? The answer is resoundingly yes, and we've done a lot of work in that area, and we're proud of it. And I would also note that there are eight communities in the region, they're, they're on there, that they have no income-restricted housing units at all. So, that's forty percent of the region has no income-restricted housing units. So, I think this is also emblematic of some of the things that are going on right now, and I think when you hear discussion about changing zoning and other things, I don't think those comments are necessarily reflected at us, I think they're reflected at other communities, some of these that are on the screen right there, that clearly are not doing their fair share. Again, our housing supply right now is a twenty-two, that's a census number, is about nineteen thousand units, a little bit more than that. We currently have two thousand three hundred and fifty-two units that are in some level of development, which I'll go through here shortly. That's going to be a twelve point one percent increase over what we had in twenty-two, so, you know, think about what we had from the previous screen from 2010 to 2022, and what we have now. Assuming the two point three persons per household, if those two thousand three hundred and fifty-two units come to pass, not all of them will, but a lot of them will, that could mean a population increase of Concord of fifty-four hundred people, so roughly speaking, that would put you at about fifty thousand people in the community. So, that's also a sizable increase, wanted you all aware of that.
I'm sorry, what, Mr. Mayor, sorry. What, for what timeframe is that estimated for?
It's going to be over the next several, not several years, but it's going to take years for that to come online, and so that fifty-four hundred person increase is not going to show up instantly, but it will show up over the next several years. So, housing that's in process, I kind of look at it this way, in the community development, we look at the department, we look at this way, so kind of stuff that's near incompletion or recently was completed, stuff that's under construction, projects that are currently in permit, have received permits from the planning board but are awaiting construction, it's not unusual for a project to have a lag time after it goes to the planning board because they've got to update drawings, they've got to finalize everything, they've got to secure their financing, they've, in a lot of cases, actually acquire the real estate they don't own it yet, so lots of moving pieces after you get a planning board approval. Projects that are currently in permitting, and then some affordable housing updates, to kind of remember that first slide that I showed you. So, without further ado, everybody knows this project, it's Pend疾Kuk Landing, we just finished the twenty units that we did the ribbon-cutting for on in March, there's fifty-four units at the site, a lot of city investment, we owned the site, we sold it to the developer, we secured a community development block grant to make infrastructure improvements on that site, we built their sewer system for them, we actually provided, the city has a revolving loan fund, and we provided permanent financing for that project. So, lots of involvement there, that's listed on the screen. You already know that we're building a park next door, we'll be having ribbon-cutting on that soon, and it's coming along wonderfully under the tutelage of Beth Benstamacher. The Coalition just finished six units last spring, early summer, out on Pleasant Street, very nice-looking project for people exiting homelessness, great project. We just finished this on, on South Main Street, this is the Isabella Apartments Building, it's at the old Employment Security Site, that is an eighty-five thousand square foot, sixty-four unit rental project. They got a temporary certificate of occupancy in July, a permanent one in August, I believe all the units are spoken for. So, that's where that's at, lots of involvement there, the city owned the site, we sold it, we put utilities underground to facilitate that, we were doing the Main Street project, it's good planning, did some environmental cleanup. This is Davis Ridge Apartments, out on 303 Sheet Davis Road, forty-eight units of affordable housing being developed by Catch Neighborhood Housing, one of our excellent partners here in the community. They are already leasing that, so if you're in the market looking for affordable housing, they are doing that through Alliance Asset Management, and you can find them online, and they are looking for their certificate of occupancy at the end of this month. Rail Yard Apartments, down on Langdon Avenue, it's a hundred and ninety-two unit project, two phases, ninety-six units each. Phase one is wrapping up right now, there's a small building there, twelve units that already has their certificate of occupancy, people are moving in, the other two larger buildings are coming along shortly here, and I expect will be occupied by the end of the year. Good project, on a former Brownfield State. Brookline Opportunities, this is up on the Heights Pembroke Road, three buildings, one hundred and twenty-three units of workforce housing rental in New Hampshire. Brookline Opportunities. This is up on the Heights, Pembroke Road, three buildings, 123 units of workforce housing rental in New Hampshire. New Hampshire has an odd definition of what workforce housing is. It's 60% of the area median income for a family of three. So, every program has a different definition, but that's what workforce rental housing is in New Hampshire defined as. They will also be, I anticipate, getting their certificate of occupancy probably in November, if not sooner. We do have single-family development that's happening, but it's relatively small, which is not surprising. It's a relatively expensive and inefficient way of developing, but it is still happening. This is out on Curtisville Road by our conservation land. It's out there. This is done by RJ Moreau Communities, five detached units out there. Those are for purchase. They have one lot that is left available. The sale price on those has been 650 to the upper sevens. So, under construction right now, you all know this project. This is the first church, Ben Kelly and John Chorley, and 30 units of rental market-rate housing. The council supported that project with an RSA 79E Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, for seven years, valued around $400,000. That project is moving along very quickly and well. Eleven Lofts. This is the old DOT facility on Stickney Avenue. It's fully permitted. It was delayed for about a year. This is too much detail, but I'll tell you the story anyway. There are two very large ancient drain lines that go underneath that building. One of them is 150 years old, literally, and it's, you can almost drive a car through it. And so, we spent some time working with Brady Sullivan to make sure that those pipes were proper, to be lined, because all of these buildings are being turned into 80 units of housing, and we wanted to, and Brady Sullivan did, do want to make sure that that was done properly so tenants would not be at risk in the future. But we also wanted to negotiate with them rates to be able to replace those drain lines, so they will not be under building someday, and we are glad that we were able to work that out with Brady Sullivan. I think they are, too. Brady Sullivan's doing some other work down there. This is Higgins Place. So, this is U-Haul. This is a little parcel across the street. They're gonna be building two detached units there. I thought they were under construction, but it didn't look that way when I drove by today, but that'll be coming along. Up on Fisherville Road, this is at, just near 30 Pines. In fact, the car wash is in the background there, self-storage. This is 68 units of townhouse, being developed by the same folks who developed Abbott Village across from Swenson's, a little bit further down the road. Same developer. They're gonna be for purchase. We anticipate that will probably take them a couple of years to build that out, but they are, state work is well underway there. Same neighborhood. This is 145 Abbott Road, another single-family detached subdivision. The original developer of this actually became insolvent, and the investors jumped in to purchase the project before it went to foreclosure auction, and those investors are moving forward. So, if you drive out there, you notice that they've been doing utility work in the street, and I think what you're gonna see is a, another developer coming in and buy all the lots and actually be the master builder for the units that get built there. For now, the barn is being, is staying, and they're gonna turn it into a single-family home. Shelburne Lane. This is off of Hoyt Road, near 153 Hoyt. Hard to see here. This is 13 lots, single-family detached on a private, private street. I believe it's actually condominium. That project's been talked about for a long time. It's moving forward. That's a 2024 aerial. Stuff that has been permitted and awaiting construction, so obviously Phase Two of the Rail Yard. This is gonna be on the other side, another 96 units. We're waiting for, to hear from Dakota Partners when they intend to start that project. There's been some suggestion that Dakota might have another developer finish that project. We're not quite sure. This is across the street from Tanniger Circle at 30 Pines. This is another 83 units of land, of townhome. In fact, the Tanniger Circle project is right there. This is Fisherville Road. This is land owned by, I believe it's Tom Cheney up there, and we're anticipating that will be moving forward and probably done in the next couple of years. This is 33 Old Loudon Road. This is behind the Chapote, if you can picture that up on the Heights. Yep. 144 units of senior rental housing market rate will be starting in February. We're anticipating that. They're probably gonna be done in about 12 to 18 months. The city is making sewer improvements on the Heights. This is one of the projects that will benefit from that, although there seems to be capacity for them right now, but they will benefit. This is 59 South Main Street. This is across the street from the Capital Center for the Arts, kind of next to the building where Cole's Kitchen is on South Main Street. Remy Hixia, who is Associate Enterprises, owns that, as well as properties downtown. He's gonna be doing an addition on the second floor and doing a facade facelift on that building. He's gonna be adding four rental units there, so we expect that to move forward soon. The Coalition to End Homelessness is doing another eight units. This is at 6 South State Street. The city is a supporter of this project in two ways. One, we secured a community development block grant for them for half a million dollars to help them acquire that site. Secondly, the city manager issued a street excavation waiver. When we repave a street in Concord, we do not let anybody cut that street for five years. In this case, the utilities there were a nightmare, and the only way we could actually get utility service to that building was to cut the street. And given how homelessness is such an issue for the community, I don't want to speak for the manager, but he signed the waiver to allow that to happen. So... This is 70 Pembroke Road, the old Sprague Site. So, to orient you, this is Regional Drive. Our airport is right here, and our community center is up here, and this is Pembroke Road. It's the old Sprague Site. It's owned by a developer based in New Hampshire. They have permits to do 370 units of townhome and apartments there. Maybe 284 apartments, 86 townhomes. That project is currently on the market, and the developer's looking to sell it to somebody who would finish the actual, go forward with the construction. Hopefully, lowering interest rates will help get that moved along. This is Club 55 at 61 Borough Road. This project's been out there in various iterations over the years. It's 21 units of senior housing. It's gonna be townhomes, but the existing home there gets turned, which is three units. It gets renovated for that purpose as well. Don't have a schedule for them when they would move forward, but that's at, on Borough Road. Catch Neighborhood Housing. It's recently secured approvals to develop an eight-story, 28-unit building. This is 6 North State Street. So, the Eye Doctor is next door. The intersection of Pleasant Street is right here. Very, it's an 80-foot-tall building. They are currently in the process of applying for low-income housing tax credits, and if they get funded, we would anticipate they would start construction within the next year or so. Across the street, and this is at a parking lot right now that was currently owned by, was owned by Riverbend, across the street in another former Riverbend property, one of the prettiest buildings in downtown. This has been acquired by GISG LLC. Mike Dennehy is working on this project. He's turning into a 12-unit rooming house for folks that have special needs or intellectual disabilities. And he's moving forward on that. We're working, the council has approved us, applying for some Invest New Hampshire funds to help support those renovations, but excellent project, much-needed project. Up on Thomas Street on the Heights, another nine units of housing's been approved there. City Council actually granted a license so they can access over some city land that we have here at the end of Thomas Street, so they can access a parking lot that they're gonna be building there. But it's basically a redevelopment of that property up on the Heights. Staying on that side of the river, but in East Concord, this is 15 Hot Pole Pond Roads, be turned into a eight-lot detached condominium. Difficult piece of property, very bony, but that has been recently approved by the, the planning board, and we're expecting the developer to move forward soon. Currently in permitting, there's two really big projects. So, the first one is ROI Properties. This is down on Manchester Street, so this is the Merrimack River. The bridge over the Merrimack River is here, and I-93 is right here. So, this is right off of Exit 13 on 93. Project is moving forward through permitting for the back half of the site, which I'll talk about. If you drive Manchester Street now, you'll notice that this is a new St. Mary's Credit Union, which is under construction. It's been fully permitted. Up up here is a new common man convenience store, gas station, car wash. It's been fully permitted. Will be starting construction probably next season. Everything on this side, this is Black Hill Road, everything through here is currently, needs to go through the planning process and complete it. The developer has a, what's called a comprehensive development plan approval from the planning board, but they still need to come in for the individual site plans for these, for these components. What this will be is a restaurant, retail, about 30,000 square feet. I believe that's office, potentially medical office, and then you have apartments, and there are a total of, let me see if I remember my notes. If I can find my note. All in all, there are, well, it's right there on the screen, because I'm tired. It's what happens when you have the drama of the technology. Anyway, so 266 apartments, 119 assisted living units. This project is awaiting approvals from FEMA to rework the floodplain, so this can be built. City Council in 2019 approved some zoning changes to allow that to go forward, including doing residential in the Gateway Performance District. That is the same district that the mall is located in.
We've been working with them for a decade, about, about a decade on this project.
So, a lot of those projects you saw in the Heights, like Davis Ridge, that's also in the Gateway Performance District. That happened because of a zoning change related to this in 2019. Let's see here. Can I move forward? I should be able to move forward.
This will be the end.
This is the night, it's very close to the end, yes. Next project is the Steeplegate Mall, which the community is pretty familiar with at this point, but this project has been delayed by some court challenges from an aggrieved butter, but we think that those might be resolved in the not-too-distant future. And there are four buildings that are proposed for 600 units of housing in addition to the Costco and the Whole Foods and some other retail that would be developed up there. It'll be supported by the recently approved sewer project that the council funded as part of the last budget that will handle the Heights. And as you know, the developers in the city are talking about a potential public-private partnership there. So, in total, this is the, how we get to our 232, I'm sorry, 2,352 units, kind of gives you a perspective of, you know, stuff that's nearing completion is there, under construction is another 222, approved but pending construction and currently in development permitting. That's what, how that breaks down. Some affordable information, rental unit information, and again, our population projection that's associated with all of that. Affordable housing, so remember that first screen that I, or one of the early slides that showed you the region? So, there are 505 units of housing that have kind of been in the works, either been built since 2020 or coming soon. So, Rosemary Way exists. The city was involved. We sold land for that. Rail Yards, we've talked about. Penne Cook Landing, we've talked about. We were heavily involved, sold land. Davis Ridge is coming along, finishing up soon, already done, starting soon, might be starting soon, already exists. So, of the 505 on the screen, 373 of those units are here, so that statistic I showed you from 2020 is a little outdated at this point. You know, Concord already is added to our income-restricted housing unit, units. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the city manager. Counselor Kretvek.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I just have two things. Can you send out this presentation to the council?
Yes.
That would be great. And then the second, the census statistic that you use for the 44,000 roughly, that includes the 3,000 in our gated community of the prisons?
I believe it does, yes.
Men's and the women's. And so, when we're looking at a potential housing increase of 40, or 5,200 to 5,300, we can separate out the people that are in the prison, correct?
If the council wanted to look at it that way, yes, yes, yeah.
With the, if you don't mind follow-up, Your Honor. Can we monitor the state's plans for a new prison and if they are anticipating adding any capacity to that renovation?
Yes, we, I fully anticipate that. We'll be working with the state when it has to bring that forward. The state's gonna need to work with us on things like utilities. There's, there's, there's a water pressure due at the prison site when you get to a certain elevation, which the state knows. But yes, we will be monitoring that as it goes forward.
Yep, thank you.
Other questions from Mr. Walsh? Counselor Todd?
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, thank you. That's really very comprehensive, and I think it's, it's very good for the council and the public also to be updated on this going forward, as we all know. The housing crisis is on almost everyone's mind, one way or another. So, I just, Mike, just quickly, I wanted to make that comment, but also, in addition to Counselor Kretvek's request, is there, was there also a way that we could make this available to the public in some fashion by posting it somewhere on the city's website, or is there a way you can?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, that'll be good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Counselor Shawson?
I agree with Counselor Todd. I appreciate this summary, because it really puts it all together. So, I think putting it all together, counting up the different kinds of housing, really helps us understand what's the whole, as opposed to this project, this project, or something else. So, I really appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. It's important for everybody to just, there's a lot going on, and I don't know if the community fully appreciates how much is going on in that regard.
I don't.
Thank you. Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. Another mention of appreciation. Of the 373 voucher units, I think that's what we, you called them, are they all full? I'm guessing, based on our vacancy rate, that they're all full?
So, the 373 affordable units that are already built, yes, I believe they are, they are full. You know, I can't speak for the Housing Choice vouchers that we talked about at the beginning, but I, I imagine those folks are also housed.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sexton.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Walsh. This is incredibly impressive, and I know that, of course, it's not organically that a lot of this happens, that there was a lot of work by your department that went into it. Quick question. Can you remind me of the, there's a state law that requires communities to have a certain portion of housing be income-restricted?
There, there is a, I can't quote you the statute, but there is a concept in state law about making sure that communities do their fair share for income-restricted housing, and I can get you that information, and we'll provide it to you.
It's behind.
Six, RSA 67458, according to Mr. Thompson, who is an encyclopedia of all things land use law.
Thank you. And do you know if that is specific to a specific size municipality? I was just thinking about the slide and showed all of the communities that do not have that income restricted, and I'm wondering if they are out of compliance with state law.
Sure. The way the state's workforce housing law works is it basically codifies an old New Hampshire Supreme Court case called Britton versus Chester, which is states that all of New Hampshire communities have to provide their fair share of the region's need for affordable housing. There is no enforcement mechanism in state law to do that. So, it is upon every individual community to try to keep track of that. The other thing that the new law does is it allows builders remedy for those types of developers who are denied projects that are affordable in those communities that are not providing their fair share. So, there's an expedited way for people to appeal through the land use courts to actually get their affordable housing done in a quicker process.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Would you be willing to just go back to that slide, so we can just look at what those communities are?
Sure. Don't look at the screen. You'll get nauseous. It hurts.
There it is. So, Bradford, Chester, Deering, Dunbarton, Loudon, Salisbury, Sutton, and Webster?
I'd be correct.
Thank you.
As of 2020, yeah.
Thank you so much.
This report, actually, from Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, is fairly new. It's, I actually spent some time perusing it last weekend. It's, it's very interesting data.
There are dozens and dozens and dozens of other communities just like that all around the state, and I'll give you an example. I won't age myself too much, but over 30 years ago, I suggested to the state, our state legislatures at the time, I was in Concord, that they actually tie state grants to the achievement of these numbers, or at least a plan for these numbers. And of course, many of those communities did not want to provide, provide housing such as this, so they weren't, people would not do that. You couldn't get anything like that through the legislature.
Counselor Kurtz. Counselor Shawson.
Just change my name at this point, Mr. Walsh. This is just another FYI along those lines, because I was doing an analysis of wards for election offices, but we have wards in Concord that have no apartment complexes. I think that's interesting. Ward 10 is one. We do have Heritage Heights, which is fantastic, is a senior residence, but we have a couple of different wards that have, beyond maybe small, senior residences have no apartment complexes at all. Most do have them, though. My ward has almost 50% senior or rental in Ward 9.
Thank you, Counselor Shawson.
Yay!
I'll just add one, one more item, and I promise I'll be quiet. The, most of these projects that have happened, that Mr. Walsh, Mr. Thompson, only happened because the city council got involved and made these happen. These, these would not be here, whether it's the grants that you got, or the improvements that you made in the roads, or the, or the additional sewer capacity or water additions, you made these happen, or the councils before you, or the councils before that, over the, all these years. So, when you look at a chart like this, you can go back decades, and this is the same situation that we've been in, where the city And this is the same situation that we've been in, where the city of Concord has stepped up and provided affordable housing and provided additional housing for the region, and other communities haven't. So, just, so you know. And from what I understand from this council, you want to continue in that vein. And that's what we're going to continue to do, is provide that housing. So, you can see, and a lot of these projects that actually haven't quite happened, haven't quite happened because of forces beyond your control. It's the market, it's the material cost rates, it's the interest rates. And when those do get worked out, and you do get the proper developer in place, you're going to get that additional housing. There is a, there's a relative housing boom going on in Concord right now, and has been for years.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the staff for this comprehensive body of work. It's, it's really fantastic, and I'm humbled by the breadth of what you've done and provided for us. So, thank you. And also, Counselor Schultz, I would love to see that research that you mentioned if you'd send it. Thank you.
I'd be happy to.
Counselor.
I have it.
Counselor second.
And thank you, Mr. Walsh. This is the second time I saw this presentation. I think last time you did the same presentation at the leadership grade of Concord. You gave us the idea of what's happening and where we are in the development. So, thank you. You said the, in the report earlier when you were presenting, it was 4.4, 0.4, is it Concord or is it statewide?
That's Concord's number. Yeah, that's, that's our, that's our vacancy rate right now. So, it's very similar to what the state is, but that is Concord's vacancy rate.
And we said the healthiest is five.
Yes.
So, we did our fair share, as we said, but we are not at that level of the 5%.
That's correct. And, you know, given, going back to the first slide of the Zillow interest in, in the number of people who want to move here, and the number of units that would take. And, you know, housing is a regional issue. And I think the slides here demonstrate that Concord's doing its fair share. I mean, you've got the lion's share of affordable housing in, in central New Hampshire. You're adding more, you're proud to do that. You've got 2,300 units that are in some level of production. And I think there's a policy question of, of Concord is doing its share. How much can Concord do compared to the other communities in the region and the state? So, and frankly, and, you know, as New Hampshire stays this attractive, it's, it's going to be hard to get to a 5% vacancy rate for rental housing.
Counselor.
I have a follow-up.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, follow-up.
So, because I just asked that question so people know, even though we are doing our fair share, we are doing a great job, but we still are in need of housing. Because oftentimes when people talk about housing, they're like, oh, we did our part, which is okay and which is very well appreciated. But we also have to put in mind that we are in the same boat like any other community. For 0.4, very far away from the 5. We'll never maybe get to 5 in the last, I don't know, 10 or 20 years to go. And I want also to ask, when we talk about the state law, is that all type of housing, supported housing, is that part of it or no?
The workforce housing law is both rental and ownership. For purposes of rental, Matt had indicated it's for those that earn 60% of area median income for a family of three. If you're looking at workforce housing for ownership, it's 100% of the area median income for a family of four because we can't have consistent definitions across state law.
Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. You gave us a list of all these various cities and towns. Are we seeing any other communities in sort of Merrimack County with any sort of activity approaching what we're doing with respect to increasing housing supply?
Within Merrimack County?
Yeah, I mean, the only community that I'm familiar with is, I know there's been a fair amount of development in Pembroke recently, and it's condo development at their golf course. And I can tell you, those units are going for like $3,600 bucks a month. So, it's, you know, it's housing, but it's not, it's not, you know, if you're cringing out a $2,500 a month apartment, you're going to cringe out a $3,600 a month, you know, condo unit.
The only communities I'm aware of statewide that are in the same neighborhood in terms of raw numbers of units being produced are Merrimack and Leonard area right now.
Salem.
Salem as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Let me just add my thanks. I know how busy your department is, and how busy your gentlemen are. When the city manager and I talked about this idea, I fully recognize that. But I too felt that this was information that would, this was the time to share this information, not only with the public, but also with the council. And just to kind of level set us in terms of where are we, what's in the pipeline, what's the city staff working on? Because you guys are involved with every one of these projects. And I just want to make sure that all of us in the community appreciate that and appreciate the work you put into it.
We'll pass that on to the folks in planning and code and engineering who are doing the real hard work. Just this quick sidebar, Mr. Mayor, it's our department of 38. The vast majority of departments new, it's young. We're seeing a building boom that rivals the 1980s for those who were around in the late 80s in New Hampshire. So, it's, it's an interesting time, but I'll let them know that your work is, their work is appreciated because everyone's who are doing the hard work right now.
I'm very glad you're bringing young folks like Mr. Thompson.
And a few others. Thank you.
I'll accept a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good work. Madam City Clerk, item number 52.
It is a report from Mayor Champlin regarding updates to the city's boards and commissions' web pages.
Thank you. We put this on the agenda. Counselor Horn came to me early in the year and talked to me about possible changes to the ways that we allow the public or make committee vacancies available or make the public aware of vacancies. She suggested creating a vacancy page on the city website. It was a great idea. The city clerk, God bless her, despite short-staffed, which has changed now, thankfully, as of today, but despite being short-staffed and working on a, working on a primary election and getting everything sorted out, did a great job of starting that work and putting that page up. As the report notes, we're continuing to work on that to have information about the frequency and other information of meetings on the site. Counselor Horn also suggested a standardized application, a form that we might put on the site. And the city clerk has, over the last several months, been doing research on that, has looked at other websites, other cities, other communities, to determine what are the best models and how we might put such an application on the website. And I want to thank the city clerk for all that work. Counselor clerk also suggested that consideration be given to changing the appointment process, which is now an appointment process which is primarily conducted by the mayor and by the city manager, in many instances by ordinance. There are exceptions to that. The planning board appoints ADR. What are the other exceptions?
A lot of subcommittees for T-PAC and a lot of subcommittees for conservation.
And some committees nominate subcommittees. We're not moving forward on that. I feel strongly that the system that we have right now works very well. And, but I do want to thank Counselor Horn for her ideas, for the things that she brought forward. And we should be seeing an application in.
Likely after, after the November.
After the November elections, right.
Maybe the New Year.
Right.
But if I could add.
Absolutely.
Our public information officer has been a great help in this. She's done quite a bit of work, although I'm doing other things.
Thank you for that.
I want to thank her.
Doing other things.
Counselor Kretovic.
Your honor, my appreciation to Counselor Horn for bringing this forward and also the Diversity Equity Inclusion Justice Belonging Committee that preceded my time on, can't speak anymore, before I was on it, this was something that had come out of the public hearings, public meetings, the forums and stuff. Counselor Horn may have been attending about having this online application for people. Not everybody has a resume, not everybody has a resume handy. But putting together just a simple application really lets people know that you're interested in being involved. I think it was absolutely one of the low-hanging fruit that was hopeful to come out of those sessions. And so, thank you, and thank you to the mayor as well.
Counselor Horn, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand before.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to thank you, mayor, and the city clerk and Ms. Brennan for, and any other city staff for all their work. I really appreciate the time that you did that, and I know how busy you were. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schlosser.
So, I have a question about our policy on terms. I think some of our boards and commissions have clear terms, and others, it's not defined. And I don't know in prior city councils if we've just decided some do have terms and some don't have terms, or it's not clear. What's, is there, is there a consistent approach for that, or we don't have, we have it different for different boards and commissions? How did the term business work for our members, committee members?
Want to answer that?
I'll give it my best shot. The majority of boards and commissions have terms set within the ordinances or resolutions that have created them. There are ad hoc committees that are more temporary, that don't typically have terms of service, just until the project is done, if you will.
So, when the city council originally sets up that committee, it determines what the term is?
And the, if I may, please, are the terms listed on the committee or board or commission's webpage? That like Schlosser term ends in '76 or, you know, whatever.
They are not on the individual webpages. But the terms for each committee, if terms are stated within the ordinance, are available on those webpages via the link.
I see. So, if I may.
Yes.
So, the process of keeping track of that, that's really the committee or board will keep track of? Or do you keep track of the term?
Yeah.
Somebody's term, somebody's term has limited, is ended, and either needs to be renewed or rotated off, or whatever that process is.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you. I also want to thank Counselor Horn for this effort too because I think that this would be a great thing for, for all of us to keep in mind as counselors that, you know, sort of part of our job is to actually try to find people in the public who are interested in doing these things. That makes things, this, this makes that a lot easier. Because now I can, I can communicate, I can just say, here's the link. And you can just go through like a menu and just look at what the committees are, what are the vacancies, and, and anything you might be interested in. And then I can sort of follow up with those people as well. So, I think this will make that process hopefully a lot easier for us in terms of helping with the recruiting effort to get volunteers on these committees. I also want to reference your honor's comment in the report that, you know, a big thank you really goes out to all the people that serve on these committees. It's a volunteer basis. People put in a lot of time. That time adds up sometimes year after year, term after term, and, and really helps, helps the city council and the city function better. So, I really do appreciate that. And also just wanted to thank your honor and the city manager for their diligent work on this in particular because I know you've been focused on it because, you know, we had two vacancies in T-PAC, for example. And all this, right away, we have a replacement. So, I know that you've been, you've been working on kind of watching, watching that and helping that. Well, and, and for the ones that you, so I know you both have a lot to do, and I really appreciate though that you're, you're spending the time to do that. It really makes, you know, having committees be able to have a quorum and meet regularly and all that is helped by that. So, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Fantasy.
The last thing I just wanted to say, aside from what everybody else said about thank you, is there's constantly openings on lots of different committees. So, if you're ever interested in something, talk to the city clerk, talk to a counselor. I know I'm on a variety of committees. It seems every year there's at least one or more. Sometimes three or four times a year, we're looking to fill the committee, so.
You can even talk to the mayor.
You can talk to the mayor too. It's fair, it's fair. But, but I, I think this is going to help, obviously, make it easier for us to send people to one place to get the information. But I also think it's really important to get the word out, there are opportunities, just ask.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to accept the report, moved and seconded. Although is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Report is accepted. Thank you very much. This brings us to, a second, consideration of suspense items. Madam City Clerk, item number 16.
It is a report from the deputy city manager of finance on behalf of the fiscal policy advisory committee regarding proposed changes to the city's fiscal goals and fund balance policy. And it was pulled from consent by Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Counselor Brown.
Yes, so we received this, all these consent agenda items Thursday evening. And I don't feel right voting for something unless I've asked the questions. So, I apologize for the late hour, but I wanted to know what impact increasing the water and wastewater fees to 30% by fiscal year 2028 would have on homeowners. What kind of an increase will folks see in their bill?
Ms. Mayor, members of the council. I don't believe that there's really going to be a, a change overall to use the same amount of water that you're using now. Basically, what this is doing is kind of reallocating between the variable costs and the fixed costs. And as water consumption goes down because of energy-saving or water-saving measures that have, or people are doing, we kind of, we need to have that level of funding in order to operate the fund. So, it's just shifting really between the variable per-unit costs and into a fixed rate, a fixed cost. And that's just being done over a period of time. This was part of the overall plan when there was water study that was done, water and wastewater study done four years ago, five years ago. I don't remember the exact year it was done. And that was all part of that plan to make some shifting and also start charging fixed rate fees in the sewer fee because that was not charged previously. So, it's all, it was all part of that plan from several years ago in order to change the way that the structure was for water and wastewater rates.
So, folks will not see an increase?
I mean, you know, I might see a little change in my water, wastewater bill, you know, based on it, especially if I'm, you know, saving more water because you can see a little bit more of a fixed rate cost and a little bit less of a per-unit cost. So, you won't have, otherwise you have the per-unit cost just keeps going up and up. And then if you have, if you have more water conservation, you know, which helps to save water, which is great, you know, but we still have to raise enough money. So, we would end up raising the, the variable rate more, which is done each, in each and every year. So, you have that fixed rate. So, you stay a little bit more steady so you can anticipate what those revenues are going to be.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. LeBrenn? Thank you, Mr. LeBrenn.
Yep.
Move to accept the report?
Second.
Moved to seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor of accepting the report as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The report is accepted. Madam City Clerk, item number 19.
It is a report from the Parks and Recreation Director relative to fiscal year 23 CIP 52 Keach Park. And it was pulled by Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, so I had mentioned this before, I believe during our budget. There is 43,454. Keach Park is a unique park in that it is really in the heart of probably the densest ward that we have. One square mile, almost over 4,000 people. So, I would love to see a water fountain at Keach Park. I know there's a water fountain at the dog park at Terrell Park. I don't know if we can't get a water fountain at Keach Park. And I'd also love to see some of those funds be used towards getting a bus stop at the community center because I think there are quite a few folks that don't have vehicles. And that would be great for them to be able to, especially kids who don't drive, or people who don't drive or newly arrived, to have a bus stop to bring them right to the community center.
Thank you, counsel. Any other comments? Do you have a, Counselor Kurtz?
Those are good ideas, and I would so support them.
So, you need to make a motion in a second if you want those to become, but do you like to hear from Mr. Gill? What the money won't be spent on, or maybe?
Surely, let's have Mr. Gill come up.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Correctly, a water fountain and a possible bus stop. We could definitely look into the water fountain, and we do have some water out there. It's just, you know, how do we get water from the pool and make it easily adjusted? I think the bus stop, you may want to also send that to traffic. I just don't know what the bus parking layout, you know, how that works, if you have to have a shelter, and if that already affects internal flow of the traffic. We're already running out of parking spaces, so I think that would be more of a, another review. The request right now is to just to make the playground repairs that are needed. I think a water fountain's doable, but I just, the bus stop is a little bit, merits are there, I just don't know what, the size it would need.
Thank you, your honor. With regards to the bus stop, we recently had a conversation at the Public Safety Subcommittee on the unhoused, and we were having a discussion with regards to the lack of service on Manchester Street. Complete lack of service on Manchester Street. And that what we're experiencing right now is members of the community that live on Manchester Street that have no access to, quick access to any kind of grocery stores, that they have to walk or ride a bike through, are now coming into the winter months, and instead are purchasing their food from convenience stores that are located on Manchester Street. This is not the way in which we should be operating our community. I would, I would much more be in favor of spending this type of money to do a traffic study, or to do a study to see if we can expand the bus line on Manchester Street than I would for a bus stop at Keach Park, that there is a bus stop that is right on Loudoun Road, and yes, I know it will improve access to the park, and all of those things are great and wonderful, but it starts with Community Action Program, who runs the cat buses. Can they even get a bus in and out of the parking lot, and if they can't, that means renovations to the parking lot. And we know this, because this is exactly the conversation we had when people wanted to have the buses go to the Beaver Meadow Golf Course. There is no bus turning around there, and so the answer was no. And the bus stop is eight-tenths of a mile away, and they were like, it's eight-tenths of a mile. The kids are walking anyway. They had all the reasons in the world for why we shouldn't do it. So I would be in favor of, if we're going to look at changing something with the buses, my first vote would be for expanding services on Manchester Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Counselor Fantasy?
I wanted to thank you for delivering this project under budget by forty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. I was up there for soccer games, I think it was last Tuesday, and the soccer pitch was packed. I think it's a project that I know our PAC was very excited about when you brought it forward as something that they should consider doing with the underutilized tennis court that was there previously. So I think it's great that this was delivered under budget and that we have these funds available to be used. And my preference is that they be used for whatever necessary maintenance and repairs are required for the park. Water fountain makes sense, if that's something that is feasible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gill, what kinds of repairs or maintenance is required in the playground?
Two thousand and two, most of the playgrounds were renovated. They're all coming to end of life. This is just some of the apparatus that we're seeing wear and tear on. I was talking to the city manager, the finance director, is having access to the money tomorrow so we can order it to get it, you know, done hopefully before winter. This was the best way to do that, since the money was already approved for Keach Park. It's just, you're going to probably see more and more of that in the fourteen playgrounds we have around the city, just because they're getting, they're all state-of-the-art in two thousand, and they're not as bad as White Park, but, you know, they are getting older. They do need to have larger repairs.
Any safety issues?
Not right now, but that's why we want to get the repairs done. And the reason why the money is being suggested to use at Keach Park is because the bond that was originally floated was in Keach Park, so you can re, you can use it in Keach Park. You can't take it to Rolf Park. You'd have, so if you didn't want to make any improvements, you just deauthorize the rest of that bond and, you know, but, so how about if we, how about idea, how about if I come back with a, or do you just want us to, if we can make the water fountain happen, make the water fountain happen and do whatever repairs that we need to do that absolutely need to be done, and try to make that work within the budget, is that?
That sounds outstanding. Do we need a motion for that?
No, I don't need a motion. Janice O'Shaw picked it up.
Counselor, second.
Thank you, your honor, and I will say, that's an excellent idea, and we have been talking about this. And I ask you a question also about the trash can, because they said some parks have trash cans, some doesn't, some have like dog trash cans, some doesn't. And this was in a class of leadership, Greater Concord, where people are questioning our city and how we manage our park, why other parks have the privilege to have this and others don't, and why this, why that. And I think there is a great opportunity for us to improve the condition of the park in all area, not one because of this or other because of this. And such an excellent idea to have every amenities possible, if we can, in those parks, and give them the same fair share. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do you have a motion to accept the report?
Counselor Fantasy.
As amended. As amended.
Yes.
Moved, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you. Counselor Schloss.
Bingo.
All right, all those in favor of the report as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Report as amended is accepted. Madam City Clerk, item number twenty-two.
It is a report from the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee on the city council referral regarding the free meeting space request by Change for Concord, pulled by Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Yes, so I just, I was at the ARPAC meeting when Mr. N. Daischamaye first suggested this, and I have seen him work within the community with young kids. He speaks at schools, and I've heard the teachers say how wonderful it was to have him present at schools. My own son attended a college fair, and Mr. N. Daischamaye was on the panel, and my son said he was the most inspirational speaker on that panel. So I really think that we can't undersell or oversell. We should pay attention to his influence among our young people, and I think I'd really like to see Mr. Gill, you know, work with Fisto to create an opportunity for Change for Concord. I read the report, and I know that Change for Concord wants to meet Friday evenings, because that's what's good for them. I think this age group is important for us, for our community. We're taking care of the kids' ages with the Spark Program. This is the next step up. And who, we don't know if we're going to be bringing in more revenue. I know when the community program happened and the facility was open, we didn't anticipate that we were going to start making money that way. So I'd like, I'd like Mr. Gill to revisit, and ARPAC to revisit creating space for Change for Concord, because we do not have a lot of opportunities for kids and young adults who are in a, who are members of a marginalized community. I think this is a really important group that we need to pay attention to.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor.
Would you like to send that back to the committee as the motion?
Yes, I think.
I'd like to make a motion to send it back to committee.
Second.
Seconded, okay. Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. So as a member of ARPAC, there was a, actually two meetings where this sort of took place. There was a presentation on April eighteenth. There was some additional information that was requested, and then at the next September meeting of ARPAC, the committee voted on the item. As you see in the report, some of the concerns that were raised by members of the committee were, one, that this time, that time had been provided in the prior year, and a small portion of it had been utilized by this group. So there were concerns among committee members that, you know, if we agreed to this, would we be opening up the community center and then not actually having it be utilized by this group? The other piece, which was a concern of certain committee members, was the community center's not open during the scheduled time, so we would actually be having to get staffing to open up the community center at a time in which we don't normally have staffing, and what impact that might have on other programming. I personally suggested that, you know, ideally, having the community center open longer hours would be great, and something that we as a council should look into funding in the future. Until such time, it didn't make a lot of sense from the committee's standpoint to open it up for this one particular group, where it was uncertain whether it would be used for the time that was being requested. But I think the committee was open to revisiting the issue in the future if it, if the community center was opening up for other reasons during those hours.
Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. May I ask Counselor Fantasy a question about our PAC's discussion?
Sure.
Sure.
Willing to answer a question?
I will take anybody's question.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I was wondering if as part of the discussion, ARPAC thought at all about, you know, users who might be interested in paying for the gym space, right? I know we have various league play and things like that, and I just wonder if there's been any exploration of revenue opportunities at this particular Friday night time, because I understand that these individuals work, they're giving up what would be Friday night social time to do this community-focused work. Similarly, there are probably other adults of a similar age, like, who work and who then recreate in other ways, who may have need of the space. I just wonder if there was any exploration of that.
There was, and the sense that, that we understood from Parks and Rec staff is they couldn't guarantee that it would be utilized during that time, and so in looking at it and the recommend, and the information being provided to the committee was, the expectation was, you're going to have to pay for this staff time with the expectation that you're going to recoup any of it. It could happen, obviously.
Follow-up?
Follow-up.
Did the committee consider a pilot to see if the space was utilized once advertised is open?
They did not consider a pilot.
Thank you.
Counselor Horn.
At the meeting, there were also some suggestions, I think it was Gropone.
Yes, that's right.
Offers for nonprofits, free space, and they are open in the evening. So there were some alternatives we did try to come up with to offer to them.
Thank you.
Thanks for mentioning that. I was up there, as a matter of fact, and that's part of their public services. It's a beautiful, beautiful meeting space. Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you. I appreciate that as well. It was my understanding in reading the report, clearly Change for Concord wasn't able to schedule to use the room at times where they could all get together, which is why they came and they asked the committee for the Friday night space, and understanding that that's not free anymore, that's going to cost roughly thirty, three hundred dollars. My recommendation in my motion here is just simply that, to send it back to ARPAC to look at other opportunities. If this is the only time that they came to with, is there another time that might work, though perhaps just a further conversation with Change for Concord to see if they've been able to make that connection with Gropone Mazda, and if not, if there's someone else in the community that can help open up that conversation with them, such as the mayor.
We'd be happy to. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I would like to, I guess, amend the motion, because when I was at ARPAC and Mr. N. Daischamaye was talking about the time specifically, it was because a lot of them had multiple jobs, and this was the only opportunity that they could meet. And I have been to that Gropone Mazda, and it is a beautiful space. But I think, I love also Counselor Kurtz's suggestion of floating a pilot, because we don't know what other groups might jump at the opportunity to have a safe, central location for Friday nights, for, you know, basketball games, for leagues. We're, we don't know. I don't think anyone anticipated, when the community program was happening, that there were going to be room rentals. So I think this is just another opportunity to serve community members and also open up community space.
So what's your amendment?
So my amendment is to have a pilot program on Fridays for the Change for Concord group. A pilot in that the center is open to...
I think what you're asking is that, that the report be referred back to ARPAC, asking them to look at a pilot. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, thank you.
So the amendment is, so now there's a second for the amendment, thank you. That's a friendly amendment. Is that a friendly amendment?
It's a friendly amendment.
All right, let's, we won't vote on it. We'll just say that that's now the amendment.
If I can just address, Counselor Kretovic asked a question, and I'm sure Mr. Gill will correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the Change for Concord specifically requested only Friday night. I think the committee was open to talking about other days when the community center was open regularly, but the, I guess, the proposal in front of the committee was the Friday night. And Counselor Horn can speak to whatever else took place, but I think, I think our memory is the same.
I agree.
Could I ask Mr. Gill to come up?
Sure.
Welcome again, Mr. Gill. It's always wonderful to see you.
It's always a pleasure. Good evening.
My curiosity is, is this. How serious is the, is the challenge, for example, of finding staff to, to cover, you know, evening hours when we're not normally open?
Staffing is a challenge. Spark Program, we're going to have, try to fire, hire six more. Most of our staff at the community center is part-time, permanent, part-time, all work, two jobs, three jobs. It's becoming a challenge.
Any other questions for Mr. Gill?
Can I ask one more, related to something previous? When I moved here to New Hampshire almost forty years ago, I refrained from using the word water fountain, because it's bubbler. That's what I just heard. It's a bubbler.
It's a bubbler.
Thank you. That's it.
That's it.
It's a long, it's a long night, I understand.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gill.
Thank you.
All right, the motion is to refer the report back to, to the ARPAC, to Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, asking them to look at creating a pilot. Any further discussion? Counselor, second.
I just have a question. When we say pilot, what will be that deadline, so that we know it's working or not working, in terms of, because it's important. Sometimes people might say, okay, let's pilot. We start, people don't show up, or people show up today, they don't show up tomorrow. What that would be for a pilot, three months, six months, a year?
Mr. City Manager.
Going to leave it to ARPAC and, and Mr. Gill to figure that out.
Okay.
Thank you. That's what I would say. Any further discussion? All right, if you are in favor of the motion, which is to refer the commit, the report back to committee, with asking them to look at a pilot program to assess the feasibility of this program, of this being open two nights a week, two Friday nights a week, for...
Per month.
Per month, I'm sorry. For a week would be hard, it's late. Then you would vote aye. If you're opposed to that, you would vote no. All right?
Right, and also be open to another location.
Yes.
That's what, that was part of it. Yep, be open to another location, all right? All right, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, item thirty-one.
It is a resolution to direct the tax collector not to execute a tax deed on certain properties in accordance with RSA B seventy-six, two, and two A. Pulled by Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, so there are twenty-two properties, and a number of these are manufactured units or mobile homes, trailer parks. I just want to know what support and outreach has been done to the owners of these properties.
Counselor, you do realize that the vote is not to exercise the tax deed. In other words, the city would, if we vote in favor of this, right?
Yes, yes, I understand that, but I'm just wondering, because in the past, there were some that were taken. I know these are not being taken, but I want to know how the city is reaching out and working with community members. with community members that are struggling.
Yeah, okay, all right. Mr. City Manager?
Certainly. The, Brian, jump up if you need to. In addition to, what happens is the collections office works very closely with all these folks who will actually communicate, that you could actually contact, and to set up either payment plans or any type of assistance and direct assistance that they may need. And some do and some don't. And what we try to do is if anybody's making any type of effort whatsoever, you know, they're behind on taxes and pay $25 a week or whatever, then you would never even actually see them. These ones here, we've looked at and said, boy, this, you know, if we were to take these properties, there'd not only be the city liability of taking these, but also it would impact these people who live in these units. So the answer was not to do that.
I appreciate that.
And the city does this, you do this on a regular basis annually, so.
Are we seeing this number increase? Are we seeing more residents who are unable to pay?
I don't, this is...
Is this an increase?
Here we go. This is one of our superstars. Not you, Brian. Yeah, Chelsea. Chelsea can show you in. Maybe you can introduce yourself and what you've been up to.
Yes, Chelsea McKelsey, now appointed tax collector and treasurer for City of Concord, going on three or four months now being appointed. But to speak to the history of this, for comparison, last year, roughly the same time, we had the same proposal for waiver properties. I believe there were about 42 on the list. We're down to 22.
Okay.
And that difference of 20 are ones that have paid.
Okay.
That means they got some kind of assistance, or they came up like was explained, they do partial payments. We explained they can make a payment, whatever schedule and amount worked for them, it chips away at it.
Follow-up, Your Honor?
Yes, follow-up.
So those who don't respond by phone call or mail, are there any that you're unable to reach? What do you do? Do you go out there? Do you have...
We have not gone out there. We send a lot by, everything by certified mail. We also send out regular mail. We started actually this year sending out not only our intent to deed notices, but also a flyer with resources, city and statewide, just so that we know what options are out there with websites and phone numbers. And we received a lot of feedback that that was very helpful. A lot of customers didn't know that existed.
That's great.
Follow-up?
Yes, thank you. I would love to see what that list of resources is, if you could make that available to Counsel.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I believe it's on the website, isn't it?
We basically took it from the website and we put it onto a Word document or PDF so that we could send it out by mail.
Thank you. Any further questions for Chelsea?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. I hope our local paper will note that we are doing our utmost to keep people in their homes and that we're not throwing these 22 people out on the street. Cold and heartless.
Do you want a motion to accept the report?
I would have a motion to accept.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk? Item number 33.
They are Mayor Jimplin's proposed appointments to the DEIJB committee, Becky Kennedy and Cara Meeker, and it was pulled from consent by Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Counselor Brown.
Yes, so before, as I talk about this, I want to highlight what the Energy and Environment Committee did for community power. We identified groups...
You're talking...
Yes, exactly.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm talking about that because while we were going out, reaching out to different groups to talk about community power, we identified those folks and those community members who had close access to people in marginalized community groups. And we heard from some members that Clement Kugugu, the director of Overcomers, had, he's been doing this for seven years, and this was the first time that he met with the mayor. Because we were doing the outreach, because it was intentional, and I think this committee is incredible, and I think it can be used to do that outreach to our marginalized community members, to share information such as the Spark program. So tied in with the Spark program, these two candidates are representing the school district, and I feel that we could have better candidates representing those marginalized community members in the school district. At this meeting, they were at the table even though they had not submitted a letter or a resume, and there were people in the audience who do work closely with marginalized community members. And I feel that, you know, that sends a message that their connections were not valued. And I think that Jessica Livingston, Sharm Amiko, Fisto N. Daischimaye, and Lisa Bowdwin, they have connections in the community that we can tap into to share information out so that they can access resources. And I just feel like that community, or that committee, would be better served with more folks who work directly with marginalized community members.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll just point out that these two individuals are ex officio representatives of the Concord School District and the Merrimack Valley School District, and that the mayor reached out to the superintendents of each of those school districts and asked them to assign who they felt within their school district administration would be best suited to act as a liaison and conduit to share information on what the DEIJB committee was doing with their school district, and to share information about what the respective school district was doing with the DEIJB committee. The membership of the committee was very deliberately built out to represent a broad cross-section of interests within the community. And I think, I understand what you're saying, I believe, but these were the appointees, these were people suggested by the school superintendents, you know? And so I think that they're highly appropriate appointees to this committee, to act in that ex officio manner as liaisons to and from their respective school districts.
Your Honor, yes. Respectfully, yes, the superintendents can speak to what they are doing, but we, students are experiencing racism in our schools that the superintendents might not have direct knowledge of. And if we are going to do anything to change that, we need to hear those stories from people who are experiencing that or work closely with those people. I think there is many levels of separation where superintendents or school board members aren't aware personally of what our community members are experiencing and what their needs are. And I know they're ex officio, and I noticed that there's a great resolution for the semi-quinsentennial and tricentennial committee. There were no positions clearly outlined for this committee. So there was no way that, it did not say that there will be ex officio members from the school. I would like to see school representation, but I think having students on the committee would be outstanding because our youth, they are experiencing racism. We heard about that during our listening sessions and from members who work with them. And also, a mother, Rahab Bajigni, spoke at the Pennacook Listening Session where her family and her children have been experiencing racism, and I think that those stories, as hard as they are to hear, they're necessary, and the communication can go both ways. They can share that with us, so we understand what policies we need to change. And then when we have things like community power, a Spark program, the water rates are changing, we can communicate it to them, and then that can filter out into the community. Clement Kugugu has a women's group, and I attended one of them, and there are mothers there who are not confident in English, and they don't feel valued because of that. And that's heartbreaking because they, of course, are valued, and I want to make sure that they know what resources there are. And I would love to have someone who works very closely with them and others who are in a similar situation as them understand all that we have available to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counselor Sekulow.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. I think this is important, but I do have a few questions and follow-up, please, so that I don't have to...
Certainly.
Is Clement on the DEIJB committee?
Yes, he is.
Counselor Brown, do you have any names on the school district, and this is only related to the school district, that you would recommend tonight, other than the two we have on the list?
Your Honor, may I?
No, may I ask a question? Does Counselor Brown work for the school district?
No.
Is she the one that should be making that appointment?
It's a question addressed to her because we are talking about representation of school, and I think it's important for us to have, and she has, she's a counselor. She can send any name for recommendation, either the owner, the mayor take it or not. Does that make sense? I sent a name to him.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor. Ask your question.
Yeah, do you have any names to recommend?
Your Honor, so I spoke with Rahab Bajigni. She was at the listening session, and she was actually excited to have an opportunity to participate in this committee. She, I think she has four children, and she has seen racism. Her children have experienced it. We can, we can address this with those folks immediately. And I would recommend either Fisto or Sharm Amiko, who work with Story Kids, because I attended an event that was held at the Bank of New Hampshire State where the kids were talking about the racism that they felt in school. And we need to stop that.
Counselor, did you have a follow-up?
I do, because I think we are all ambassadors of our communities. Either you sit at a table or not, if there is an issue in the community, you should bring it to anybody you feel comfortable to share. Because sitting here around all of you guys here, hearing that, of course, we never doubted there is racism in our community, but I think it's very important that we all put that in mind as elected official to make sure that when we hear this, you don't have to be an elected official or sitting at a table to be a good citizen of your community. If you know something is happening, bring it to anybody you feel comfortable to. Thank you.
And I would just mention that part of the work of the steering committee is going to unearth these stories and to listen to these stories and to hear these lived experiences. Counselor Kurtz.
I just wanted to say, or may I ask Counselor Brown a question?
Sure.
Counselor Brown, the woman that you mentioned, is she an employee or an elected person in either school district?
She is a mother in the Merrimack Valley School District, so it was at the Pennacook, at the Pennacook Listening Session that she spoke, and that I, and I reached out to her recently, and I have shared her contact information with the mayor.
May I follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. While I understand your valid points about voices not at the table, to me, it's clear that the specific role of these two individuals is as liaisons to the school board who can talk and have a spot where they can talk about policy and procedure and transmit information. And while I hope very strongly that the DEIJB committee continues to create a space for the authentic conversations that Counselor Brown is referring to, I don't, I believe that if these are the two that came forward from the school districts when asked, that we...
Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept these appointments.
Thank you.
Second.
I approve the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no.
No.
All right, the ayes have it. That, thank you, thank you for that, thank you for that discussion, because I think these are important things for us to talk about. We now have comments, requests by mayor and city counselors. Counselor Schultz.
This is when we announce things, right?
That's right.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. I just wanted to briefly say I recently resigned as a supervisor of the checklist at Ward Nine, a position I've held and been elected to or appointed to at the beginning for 16 years. I'm very proud of that. It's easily one of the coolest things I've ever done. In many states, anyone who can print out the form, register people to vote, but it's very special here that we can do it on Election Day. So if you know anyone who's interested in doing that or other roles on Election Day, talk to our wonderful city clerk. But I'll say, Ward Nine, I have great trust in because it's been an amazing bipartisan, well-run, as far as I know, above board, they all are. And I just wanted to note that I was very proud to do that, and just as a city counselor, I think our city clerk is amazing. She does amazing work, has all of her staff.
And thank you for those years of service, because poll workers like you are absolutely critical to the functioning of our democracy. So thank you.
Thank you. My honor, it's been my honor.
And I saw other hands. Counselor Brown?
Yes, so October 24th is the I-93 widening conversation at the Heights Community Center, and October 26th, Bachelor Mill Trail hike at Nine, and an energy expo at Bo Memorial School that Concord Energy and Environment Committee is participating in. And voting is November 5th. Folks may not realize that RSA 674-54 authorizes government buildings such as schools do not have to follow land use regulations. And that's true for the state, that's a state law. However, Concord also, other communities have bonding by city council, voters, aldermen, but Concord is different. Our school board can bond, and they recently did, a sole source contract for over $20 million. This election, there will be two amendments that empower voters. One will require a simple majority of voters to approve a school relocation, and the second one, a simple majority of voters to approve the sale of property larger than one acre. Please get out and vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kurtz.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, are you going to be talking about Concord Sound and Color? If you plan to, then I don't have anything to say.
I was, but you know, why don't we do it together?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yay, okay. This week is another phenomenal opportunity to get out and enjoy our amazing Capital City, downtown Concord, October 18th and 19th, from 11:00 to 10:00 p.m. Performances, outdoor artist market. This is an idea that I know has been many years in the making. I'll turn it over to you.
Two, a couple of years in the making, ever since the Capital Arts Fest kind of faded out. When I was chair, still chair, no longer, of Creative Concord, I asked the leadership of the arts community, the Chamber and In-Town Concord, to think up a better idea, and they have really thought up a better idea. This is free music, art installations, there are already some of them in the parks.
Community art opportunities, so bring your family, participate in community art making.
But kudos to the Chamber, to In-Town, to the heads and staff of all of our arts organizations in the, in the, in the community. They have helped to turn this into the fall of festivals in Concord. That's it? Oh, and if you're interested in learning about it, just do a, go to, excuse me, Concord Sound and Color, that's all one word, dot com. ConcordSoundAndColor.com for all the details.
Well done. High five.
High five. Counselor Sekulow, then Counselor Foote.
Thank you. I will also ask you to join me because Mr. Concord 2024 event is coming on October 24th. I'm honored to be invited to participate in that. I learned about it through Mary. I attended an event, and she called me today and said, please ask the city council, because this is a city event, and it's a great opportunity to give back to the community and have fun and be part of a greater event. So it's on the 24th of October at 63 Bog Road in Concord, and the events start at 6:00 p.m. and it's only $60 per person to make the impact you should make in the community.
Are you ready for the bathing suit competition? I hope you do better than I, because I failed the talent. Failed the talent competition.
I told them I don't sing, I don't dance. What else do you need? So we have something planned.
Good.
We'll see. Second, can I just, you want to add to that?
I want to add to that.
Okay.
I just want to say, Counselor Sekulow, I love that Mary McGann is such a legend in this community that she is just known as Mary. So one name only, Mary McGann, Mary.
So she really asked me to extend, and she sent a flyer to both the mayor and I, to the entire city council. So you are all invited, and I think it's a great event to enjoy. And I do want to also express my great gratitude to this council for your open mind and pertinent discussions. It makes me proud to... It makes me proud to sit around this table, to see that people care about the community at large, and I mean it. I go to Manchester and other communities, and I will tell you, we all should be proud of ourselves that we have that mindset of serving Concord, not to please one or two, but just to open also our mind to give everybody an opportunity to discuss. And I think that's the right way to do it, and that's the best way to do it, and that should be the privilege we have as elected officials, to not be dictated by what one person thinks or others, than just what is better for the community at large. Thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. Just want to compliment General Services driving throughout town or the city on their efforts for road paving and sidewalk improvements and everything that's related to that. That really makes us a very attractive city, and I think they're doing a great job with the resources that has been provided to them. And so kudos to those guys and gals. And then volunteers, East Concord, the Roundabout, there were several volunteers that have put quite a bit of time in, you know, weeding, cleaning, spreading bark mulch, all of the things to make that area attractive. I just want to compliment and those folks who volunteer in that effort. Then lastly, October 27th, Memorial Field, 11:00 a.m., Festivity Start, Walks at One American Cancer Society, Making Shrides. Encourage everybody to participate, volunteer, whatever you can do. Great effort, and it's worthwhile, so hope you can all be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two items. One of them is short notice, I realize, but it's so interesting, I want to mention it. The Pennacook Historical Society is going to host From Guns to Gramophones: Civil War and the Technology That Shaped America. That's tomorrow night on October 16th at 7:00 p.m., and presenter Carrie Brown will explore the technological triumphs that affected the outcome of the war and subsequently transformed the nation. I'm unfortunately going to be at the planning board meeting, so I'm going to miss it. If anyone hears this, that sounds like a great, great event. And also, the Pennacook Historical Society will be...
You reminded me, you reminded me of W.C. Fields and what he put on his gravestone. Overall, I'd rather be in Philadelphia.
You're so right, you're so right. The Pennacook Historical Society is also going to be doing its traditional Pennacook Halloween Parade. That's going to be on Saturday, October 26th at 1:00 p.m., 11 Pennacook Street. Costumes are encouraged, there will be games, cookies, and cider, all are welcome. Thank you.
Counselor Horn?
I would like to invite everyone to the Jibawali Celebration that will be on Sunday, October 27th, at the Unitarian Universalist Church. There will be lots of food, dancing, fun performances.
Thank you.
And throwing of colors. No, that's all we have.
Counselor Foot?
Two quick things. One, everybody's favorite service is coming, leave pickup. Whoop! As you can see from Counselor Kurtz...
Almost as much excitement as Sound &amp; Color.
Exactly. Second thing is, I want to thank the city clerk and her staff in advance. They've got some, they've got a lot of work coming up, and I'm sure a very long night ahead of them. We won't see you until after the election, so just let us, let us know if there's anything we can do to help, but we know everything is in good hands with you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to announce your new position?
We recently filled a vacancy in the clerk's office. We've had a vacancy in our office since the end of May and have hired, as of today, her name is Lindsay Covey. She comes from the collections office, and we're really excited that she's joined our team. So stop in when you can, perhaps after the 4th, unless you like crowds, or the 5th, to meet her. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say that, you know, prior to the primary, I was, I was booted out of the clerk's office several times, or at least we canceled our meetings.
Not just you.
So I'm going to be out of your hair between now and the 4th, as much as I can.
Just so you know, we've had to actually, she requested taking over the city hall lobby for voting purposes, that many people coming in, and just the backlog of folks at the counter trying to do regular business plus voting. Pretty astounding.
Yeah, I can attest to that. I was at her, at Janice's office at 10, right? And there were people lined up out the door, and people sitting at the little cubbies where they can...
Oh, no. I have to get my...
It was exciting. It was really exciting.
Or destination looking.
Well, that's what Zillow says.
Yes.
All right. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
All right. Any other business to be brought before the council? I will remind the council that we are meeting for a CIP overview and work session on Monday, the 21st. We will be convening in non-public session at 6:00 p.m. on the 21st, and then we will go into our CIP work session at 7:00. All right? Do I have, let me see. I think that Counselor Horn moves that we adjourn, and Counselor McLaughlin seconds.
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
All right, gladly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.